This conference will now be recorded.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good afternoon. It is 1 o'clock, Tuesday, May 20, 2025. Mitchell County Board of Supervisors and Mitchell County's Board of Health meeting. We have an agenda in front of us. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Move to approve.
Jim made a motion. Is there a second?
I seconded.
Sam, second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
We'd like to open the meeting with the Mitchell County Board of Health. The agenda is written as printed. Do I have a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve the agenda as written. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Terry seconds. All in favors? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried.
We'll move on to discussion and possible action on general assistance.
So I printed up some packets with just some general information there and started with the Mitchell County General Assistance Program policy as it states currently. I think the last time it was updated was 2022, and it is in support of the Iowa Code, Chapter 252. And that is the chapter wherein it is the county's role to support of the poor. And that whole Chapter 252 outlines all of those parameters. And you can kind of read there, the purpose of the General Assistance Program is to provide assistance to needy or poor person who's in need of immediate assistance, not able to obtain from another source, who has income or benefits delayed from a state program or not actually received because of reasons not attributed to the person and who does not have liquid assets of a family unit for which to pay for services. However, if a benefit check is still to be received, the office reserves the rights to recoup some of those monies. And that whole general assistance policy is for Mitchell County is laid out. It's about five pages long. It talks about the application, the emergency situations, the eligibility steps, veterans, employees, income guidelines, and the type of assistance that we are currently providing within our current budget where we are budgeted for assistance with some food cards. And then there's also assistance for some rent. There is a limited number of times a person can apply for those general assistance programs. There's also some utilities where we pay a utilities bill directly to a utility company. And there are funeral services programs. So to date, we've spent about $100 in just general office supplies, 300 in food cards, 8344 in rent payments, and 2960 for utilities, and 3,450. So we're at about $16,000 right now in our current budget. Last year, we had spent about $21,894. I think we're budgeted at $22,500. Does that sound right?
So it was $20,800.
Or $20,800 for this year. And I was thinking that it was...
It might be.
Twenty-two-five. I'm not so known. Yeah, for 25, for fiscal year, 25, 26. And the reason that we are concerned, of course, with the general assistance situation is that we are required to provide that service. And our county social services team has been providing that through CSS, through the state for the last several years, been doing a wonderful job. And unfortunately, that CSS program is sunsetting on June 30. So we've been reaching out and doing some research and trying to find out what other counties that are in the same position as we are are doing to make sure that they get their general assistance covered. And there is a list of counties that have just moved their general assistance under the umbrella of public health, which is why I wanted to get the Board of Health here to kind of review and understand what might be a possibility. I'm not saying anything that is. We're looking at solutions as to how we can cover that position. It appears to be most counties are saying six to eight to 10 to maybe at the most, if you're just getting started, 12 hours a week, that they're expending in general assistance. And so that's the timeframe. And what was supported by Ashley Rosendahl would be, you know, in that similar range. She had just sent a recap and would be in that similar range.
So what I'm reading from her was her general assistance for January was only four hours. February was three hours, March was two hours, April was three and a half. So that's significantly less than 12 hours a month.
She's averaging 3.125 hours per month for the first four months of the year. And then her referrals ends up to be over 20 hours a month, 24, 27, I think. I thought I had it on a little sticky note here I was looking for. So even at that, you know, but we're not, I guess, we wanted the Board of Health to be aware of a possibility of general assistance. So Andy, maybe I can ask for your input from that team there. We've been in contact, or I have been in contact with Laura just because I'm trying to get information on various services, various county offices, that what they're doing. And she's been able to provide some information.
Jim, can I, so what was the numbers that Ashley gave you?
She has for just general assistance alone. Now, she has information and referral listed separately, and those are more. But for general assistance alone, January is four hours, February is three hours, March is two hours, and April was three and a half hours.
Okay. And that's what, so there's been lots of discussions at our public health administrator meetings for the last probably six months on general assistance, knowing this may have been coming. And there was already currently some in our region that were already doing general assistance. So it had already been discussed, and they had kind of been telling us like four to six hours a month. So that kind of goes close to that. So with that being said, I don't know what the supervisors are planning, but just kind of where I'm coming from. If the county, I know you guys have been discussing a part-time position. If that is something, I just want to let you know if that is something that you guys choose not to do or don't have the funds to hire a part-time to do the social services and general assistance. I personally am willing to take general assistance duties only at our department. I think a few of us could be able to handle handling that general assistance budget and dealing with the application. If it's going to be four to six hours a month, I think that's something we could absorb. Now, I know you guys have discussed the part-time social services and general assistance position. I personally would not, if you guys chose to do that, I would not, I would prefer it not fall under the Board of Health and under public health. That's just my preference. Clearly, the board can do whatever they want. But if it's just general assistance, again, I feel like our department could absorb that.
My concern is what Ashley does, seeing her hours, she spends a lot more time with the other referrals and information. So people have come to know that they come for general assistance and they come for the social services. She assists people in filling out the Medicaid forms, getting where to go to get this, that, and the other thing. The difficult thing would be if it was just general assistance, people are still going to be coming then to public health and expect the other services unless it was clearly delineated who is going to do what.
I agree. I think they're going to go together no matter what because there is no other social service person in Mitchell County. And to my understanding, we don't have a mental health advocate in Mitchell County anymore.
Sure. Right.
So how do we separate those services from each other?
Right.
So it would be more than that many hours because you would end up doing the referrals. So maybe not immediately, but eventually people would know that's where they go.
Well, and it's in the same building. So you bring up a really good question. And Floyd County took over in May. And so I had an opportunity to visit with her and ask her, what are some of the bumps in the road? What are some things that you're experiencing? Similar type of hours as what Ashley was spending, maybe a little more because they're in the learning stages on some of the forms for general assistance. But her comment was, we are only doing general assistance. And we share with people that we are only doing general assistance. And she had reached out about the families making connections with Floyd, Mitchell, and Chickasaw. She said, we use this, you know, and we will help people find where to contact. And then, you know, it's their responsibility. Laura's team has put together, helped put together a good resource book as well. She said they're also updating their resources now that things have changed and put together kind of a cheat sheet, so to speak, for, you know, when someone comes in, you know, what's the best way to handle it. And she said it really has not been an exorbitant amount of time. And they, again, are also waiting to see what our district, new district representative will bring to the table. The North Iowa Community Action, Cindy Davis, said that they would be willing to send someone over to assist if needed. They, of course, wouldn't have a person in the office every day like we've, you know, been accustomed to the kind of service. Without a doubt, those two individuals have done a great job of serving Mitchell County. And I don't think anybody is disputing that. Nobody is disputing that. We're trying to look at how can we maneuver past this sunsetting of those services from the, not sunsetting those services, but sunsetting that office at the county level. And several other counties are in the same boat, you know. So go ahead, Laura. Was there any other?
So I guess you answered my question on how, like, because I knew what other counties were saying it was taking. But as far as what Mitchell County, so you kind of answered that question. I mean, I would prefer, and I don't feel, if we were to take general assistance on, I don't feel like we would have to hire anybody, and I would prefer not to. But then that brings up the point, if down the road or if we find out it does take more, take more hours to do these duties, is the county willing to increase our budget? If that is the case, if it is taking more time, if it's starting to be a more push on our agency and more hours. But I guess that also kind of answers the question, too. It sounds like it's not taking that many hours where it would require a full-time or a part-time person just for general assistance. But if it was, is that something, you know, I don't know what you guys are thinking on that. If that would come up, if we were to take it out and it was taking more time?
So you're talking expanding, if it was expanded beyond general assistance as far as if you're asking for more money, if it became something more than just general assistance? Is that your question?
Well, if it was an issue where it was taking more time and I was needing to hire a part-time person to take on those things.
So we're just talking general assistance? So what are you talking about for hours then that you reach?
Well, I mean, if we're talking four to six hours a month, we would, between multiple employees, we would be able to take that on.
And that's what it sounds like, from your data and what her data is, that's what it sounds like it is.
Okay.
So I mean, I don't know how to answer as far as the future.
I have one question. So when someone calls and wants general assistance and they don't qualify, so you have to refer them to someone else, are you saying you're going to say, this is all I can help you with?
So what, okay, so what I'm...
You don't qualify, so now I'm done?
And where do you go?
Or are you saying you're going to get your book and say, this is the number, contact this person? Because that's where my fear is. You're talking about nurses. People are there to help people. They're going to have a really hard time separating the two and saying, you don't qualify for public assistance, so you're going to have to call someone else. So then, you know, I can only spend this much time showing you where to go. Here's one number.
Right.
And then I'm done? That, I feel like that's not going to happen.
Right. I feel like, so social services, correct me if I'm wrong, maybe they're on the call, provide a lot of resources to people when they come in? And that's, you know, and that's something we would have to have those tools and resources to be able to give. I know the, I believe it's Primary Care Association that is hiring these navigators that you call that we can give these people this number and they will provide those resources.
There is that service. Because that's where I see the problem. They call you, or Jess, or whoever's answering the phone, whatever, nurse, and they're not going to be able to say, just call this number. They're going to want to help them. So it could take longer than that.
Well, and I would like to say, you guys have done an amazing job with your budget in not overusing and not taking county money that was allocated or any more than what you need to. So I feel you could be trusted to handle that. And we can't help what the economy might do in the future and this increase. But if you had somebody else, they'd also have to increase if they were under you. And so I agree with the rest that...
But if there is a number, one number they can call that has all the other...
That sounds like that is the plan.
That's what it's supposed to be, is there's a number that they can call to get to the navigator, the navigator will help them. Or they can actually get an iPad and navigate the system. The problem is, is that's not going to happen. And the state has not thought this out adequately.
Right. So in six months, when that's not working and we have, and they're doing way more than this, will it be revisited at that time?
So let me finish. So originally, I wanted to keep these two gales on, working with the Board of Supervisors, because I could see a problem in the future, and I just don't think the state system's going to work. Not that they would take the place of the navigator, but they would actually bridge the gap in order to help our people to do that. And there's a number of other things that was proposed that would keep them busy, that would justify them to continue on what they're doing. General assistance is one of them, but that's just a very small piece of this pie. So get to the point where you were wondering if you were going to need funding in the future, it would be, I would, because you're taking on more roles other than the general assistance, the general assistance is very small, so I don't have an issue with you doing that. But in the future, if you say, we need more money because we're doing a lot more information and referral, I would have a problem with that because personally, I was trying to solve that problem now before that problem even came about. And the answer that your nurses are probably going to have to say is that that's not in our realm of expertise, and here's the number to call. Unfortunately, that is what the state has put forward to us. It's not our problem. The state has messed this whole thing up.
Right.
No, I agree, but I think that's going to be very hard to do.
I would agree with you. I totally understand.
And that's why I feel like our agency can take on the general assistance only.
Right. But again, realistically, they're going to expect more, and it's going to take more than that four to six hours a month.
When there's nothing else.
Right.
Right now, maybe you could do that when Ashley and Megan are there because they have another place to go in Mitchell County. But when there is no other place, I foresee them continuing to come back to public health until they get exactly what they need.
So Jim, what I'm hearing you say is you were trying to avert this crisis you foresee coming by keeping these two online. But wasn't Megan's job not in the office helping here all the time, correct?
Megan's job, well, I guess I don't know how to answer that because I don't know the specifics of what she actually had to do or whatever. But there were job descriptions that were created that defined what their roles would be. And so, and part of it, I won't give you the whole job descriptions, whatever, but part of it was Ashley would be the mental health advocate for Mitchell County, rather than us farming that out. And then the state reimburses that, so part of her pay being to state funding is to be a mental health advocate. When Megan is out of office, then that's the part-time role. And Ashley could be in office as far as so there would be some presence always to actually be able to help people with information and referral, help general assistance. That was the thought.
I understand where you're coming from. What I could see as being very feasible to fit those needs would be a part-time position. And I'm not sure what those hours are. But that they could take all of that on because there are going to be some gaps. I can't foresee two full-time people. Oh, okay. But one person that could maybe do that, and obviously opening it up for applications and so on and pick the best candidate to be in that position, who has some of the mental health background, because that's going to be bigger and bigger all the time, as well as the assistance with all of those services. When you said the state has created this, I think, I agree. I also foresee there to be other changes with some of our people who are already hitting that poverty line, who are going to be kicked off of Medicaid, who are not going to have the services they need. And they will be coming to ask, what can I get? What can I do? So I agree, there is going to be a crisis bigger than what we're seeing now. And I just foresee one person in the office being able to handle much of that.
I have a question. Are Megan and Ashley funded by the state alone?
They're funded by county social services at this time.
Which company is funded through the state?
The state.
No.
No. So those funds are now going towards other, maybe you guys can help me explain this, to like primary care, Iowa Primary Care Association.
Right. They split it out into two different divisions.
So they are the ones hiring the navigators to cover the districts. And so there will be a navigator, so that's the number that we will give, other people will give, not just us, to call to get those resources. That's how the state is choosing to do.
And there'll be one office in that district?
Yes. Yes.
In that one office.
And they don't know where that is yet.
We don't know what it looks like.
Or, yeah, what those services.
Yeah. Right. We don't know what that looks like. It could, you know, six months down, we're not really going to know for a while what it's going to look like.
So there's right now no budgeted money for Mitchell County's social services?
No, they're, they've got the...
And none is coming back from the state?
Rachel was Mental Health Disability Service. Anyway, we used to have a levy rate for that. And then the state took that portion of this all over. And then that's when the state decided to do the funding themselves. Had county social services, Southeast Iowa Social Service, I can't remember the region, or the regions is where we're at now. So the state took it over, and county social services is a state thing. Did that answer the question?
Yes. So now that is going away, and that's, it's just, their alignment is just changing the way they're doing it. So, you know, just to be honest and transparent, I do support a part-time social services and general assistance, kind of like what Ashley is doing now. I do have some concerns with that. Again, I do support it. I just have concerns for future budget cuts. If a job gets created, I don't know where the Board of Supervisors are as far as funding. I don't know, that's your guys' thing, it's future. I know you guys were talking, you know, possible budget cuts during budget hearings. So that's where I go to right away. And so I would hate to see, if there isn't funding to support a position or positions for those, I would hate to see budget cuts for our department or other department heads or departments as well. So I just always think of that and always have a concern with that. Duplication of services, I realize it's going to look different July 1. We don't know what it's going to look like. Also, the, maybe the lack of state support if we use county dollars to support these positions when the state is already supporting these positions in a different way, such as these navigators. So I don't know what that looks like. These are just my concerns. I'm just being transparent with my concerns.
The overlap, I didn't envision it as being an overlap in services, but more or less being to fill the gap and help people point them to a direction. There are people that have, there are people that can't even navigate through this.
Right, right.
And if you expect them to get onto this and access the state system, that's impractical.
And wait on hold and push buttons.
And know how to...
So that's my thought, is that an individual would fill the gaps in order to help somebody get to the state system, get to the navigator. To talk about what you just mentioned, and I'm not picking on you. Sometimes I can come across that way, and I'm not, okay? So something that has bothered me about this whole process is departments having an issue with what is being proposed. And it's been interpreted by me as being a very negative thing as far as wanting to do, and I'll just say it, what I wanted to have happen, I wanted to be a very negative atmosphere. I much would have rather seen departments come and say, Board of Supervisors, we see a need as far as what's happening here. Is there something you can do to make this happen? It was never like that. It was that, I'm afraid we're going to have our budget cut, so I don't want this, I have big concerns because you might cut our budget. I'd rather seen a positive thing. What can you do to make this happen? And I haven't seen that, I've heard that once. So that's a little bit of a...
And I would say sometimes budget cuts are needed in another place, but that doesn't have anything to do with the fact that maybe a new position is needed.
We, I mean, I'm not giving the budget, so I can't say much, but...
We're sitting in a huge unknown.
Yeah.
And I saw this right now.
Right now, general assistance needs to be addressed. Let's get that addressed off the board, and stay open-minded, see how the navigation goes, to see how the new system that's being put in place goes, keeping the open mind that we may have to step in and tweak what we're doing. Because we just don't have the crystal ball. And I guess I can't see wasting time discussing something that we could take care of right now, the GA.
And it does say general assistance, that's what the agenda is.
Yeah, I just really think we should focus on that right now, get that taken care of, and come what may, we'll, we'll handle it when, if when we have to. It's such an unknown.
I agree, Terry, and very well put, because we don't know. But I, we also know that navigating a different system on a computer for many of those folks who really need the assistance and help is going to be incredibly difficult. So keeping an open mind that we can revisit it if we find that to be an issue.
Absolutely, and we do know, and many people know, we have the food bank.
Yes.
We have DHS. We have a lot of resources already established.
Right.
That people can go to, and as everybody was talking, my social work mind was, and I kept thinking to myself, "The one thing you can't do is enable." You have to keep those people as independent as possible, because for some of them, that's all they have.
That's their purpose.
And you can't, "Oh, here, you know, let me hold your hand and do everything for you." Terry, it doesn't work.
The other thing though, and we are talking about, there are going to be some huge Medicaid cuts. And we've had people come to the food bank that I've had that conversation with about how to go and who to talk to to get on Medicaid, to get that assistance. So I think there's overlap in every one of those departments, people are going to voice their need. North Iowa Community Action, she did mention, because I mentioned the Medicaid form assistance, and she said that she, they would provide, come and provide some assistance.
And we have Elder Bridge, and we have, we just have so many.
Forms out.
Established entities right now that work hand-in-hand. And I, like I said, I just see, in my thinking, best to start, let's get GA set, established, good to go. Then we just continue, it, it's just a wait-and-see game.
Yeah, I agree with Terry too. Just something I want to point out, just because we don't know what this is going to look like, we don't, I mean, it could be a horrible flop, and it's horrible, and then something needs to be done. But, but it could be okay too. We did get a survey from the state of Iowa a couple weeks ago. As we're a provider, we, it's just a provider profile, so we had to fill it out, what programs we offer, things like that. And one of the questions on it at the end was, "Does your county, are they interested, or is there a need for a navigator in your county?" And we, we said yes.
Of course.
So, you know, we don't know with that. We might, we might get one once a month, I have no idea. But I just wanted to make sure you guys know that, that that was a question on there.
Appreciate it.
And we did say yes, so hopefully something comes of that, so.
So Jim, I want to just respond to your, your, your comment about department heads. And I guess I heard comments from a lot of the department heads exactly the opposite of what you just stated, and, and I feel like I need to mention that. And in our department head meeting, we, we talked about the splitting of those two, you know, two particular positions. But resoundingly, from those people was, "We appreciated the social services support, we understand that, and, and they don't like the, the position the state has put us in any more than we do." And, but what came from them that I heard was, "Are we willing, what are we willing to do to help out as far as that's concerned?" You know, they even talked about, "Can, can somebody within the courthouse take this on?" The, the concern maybe would have been, you know, "Where would you take someone to sit to, you know, to make a phone call to the, the facilitator or the coordinator at the district level, the new District III level?" But, so, so from those department heads, it, it was not negative as far as a part-time social services assisting with people. Their, their concern, as I think most counties, is how do we financially support what the state has already said they're going to support at a district level? And, and I resoundingly in my calls, heard them say, "We want to be very cautious that we don't cut off some state assistance by saying, 'We got this, you don't need to worry about it, we're gonna fill the gaps,' and, you know." So some of them said, "If we don't show a need, then what kind of service or assistance will we give back?" So I just wanted to answer that, "I'm sorry that you heard that from department heads, I did not."
I would appreciate it, hearing that in a board meeting, because this is the first I've heard that.
I, I think I voiced that in, in the board meeting after the department heads.
I didn't hear that there was any department support as far as any of this, I did not hear that, so.
I think their concern was, you know, "Are we, are we going to add positions, and then next year, they're going to ask us to cut positions because in fact, the tax levies are gonna change?" Now, everybody out there is aware of the bump down to 2%. So, from that standpoint, you know.
And so I.
Yes.
I will answer, I will answer to that. And so, and I had this conversation with, with Laura, not picking on you again, we just had a conversation about this. So personally, that is the board of supervisors' problem, it's not the department's problem.
Absolutely.
That's why we are here. Departments represent their individual departments, the board of supervisors represent what happens in the county as a whole, that's our deal. And so, sitting here personally, I have to, I have to balance what I see is gonna happen in the future, and I have to balance as far as what I see the need is for right now. And I'm not gonna always base my need decision as far as what's going on right now on what I'm afraid's gonna happen in the future. There is a balancing act. If you always are worried about what's gonna happen in the future, you will do nothing. So you have to think ahead, but you also have to address the needs right now.
Absolutely.
And I, no, that's okay. And I, I'm not going to speak for other department heads, I will speak for just myself. But I think some of what my concern was, which was interesting because it was kind of your concern that people didn't come to you, my concern with the HR position that was being discussed, not, not one of you guys came to us, department heads, asking us our opinion. And maybe, maybe it doesn't mean anything, sorry, Fanda. Maybe it doesn't mean anything.
I'm so into.
Sorry. But I, I didn't, I talked to you after, you know, our email, but that is not a question you asked me, I don't know if you asked the other department heads.
No, I did not.
But I, I think maybe that, the approach, maybe had, was why we were feeling the way we were, why I was feeling the way I was against it, because this is all being discussed, but you haven't even talked to the department heads about this. So, just speaking for myself as a department head, that I kind of felt the same way you did, you know, as far as that, so.
I feel right now, we should focus on what is on the agenda.
Thank you.
And not muddy the waters with other things that aren't what we need to look at right now.
Stay, stay on task, please.
I have one, I don't know if this goes with the, I'm curious, do Ashley and Megan have a, how many people do they see? How many clients do they see in their office in a day or a month, or?
So, so I did ask that a couple of times, and wasn't able to get a response. They did say that they were going to review that again and get back to us with how many people they're serving. A light county in population to ours said they serve about 100 people in a year. You know, so, and, and that was kind of what I had heard from another county as well, was in the 80 to 100. But I, I do know that Megan and Ashley said that they were going to look back through their records and, you know, document, because of course, you know, someone might come to them once and, you know. As far as the general assistance, they did say that they have all the records, and they have maintained all of those records within either, I would assume it's an Excel or a Word type file system, and that they would transition those records over to, or however the, the next responsible individuals or individual is for general assistance. They also talked about, I asked about the IT equipment, the laptops, our CSS laptops, so they will be wiped clean on the 30th of June. And she stated, Megan stated yesterday, that if the county was interested in any of their equipment, laptops, you know.
So it has a.
Screens, any of that kind of thing?
Things to consider, Liz.
Yep, yes, go ahead.
In the beginning, it says, "Who will be managing general assistance in the future and transitioning the duties in managing the Department Number 12?" So if Laura, if, if that so happened, Laura would be able to take care of that.
Which one are you referring to?
The first one.
Oh, the very first one.
Yeah. So, and then storing all these documents, you guys don't have a whole lot of space.
Yeah, we would have to, I don't know what.
Would you be possibly using the offices that they have?
I don't know, I guess that, I mean.
Would you want to be having, would you want your Board of Health to mix in, or not Board of Health, sorry, public health patients and GA assistant patients be coming to your doors?
I mean, we could have a room that we would meet the people in, or they could come to our office, and that's, you know, something we can kind of discuss, and I don't know what you guys think. I don't know if they have two offices. We're going into those offices down the road, but maybe that's where we would go to meet with anybody who comes in for general assistance if it went their route. And then the files could all get saved.
Mm-hmm.
They need confidential.
They need what?
Confidential.
Yes, and we have offices, but.
I know you do, but I'm just saying that it's a concern.
Right, so maybe that's one of those offices, be general assistance.
Right, right. When they're referring people and they do the, what are they calling that position? The coordinator?
Coordinator.
From the state level, who helps navigate everything?
Navigator.
Navigator. Where do they, I can foresee people not having a computer or access to that, where would they send them? The library?
So it's a phone number that they call? And as I said, we've kind of discussed in our office, like, do you, do we have a phone number or a phone there to, to help them call, and then they can take the call there, whether it be, you know, we have that small conference room or, or somewhere that they could, we could help facilitate them, so they have a phone to call, if that's the case.
So they're not being thrown out the cold, because they're on a piece of paper. They're offering, "We can give you a private area, here's a phone you can use if you need help, we are there, otherwise, you're able to handle it on your own."
Could they, are there plans for those two offices at this time? We maintained all of the furniture a couple of months ago that is in that office, we said that we would maintain that.
So that would be a good spot. Are you on either of these two, Housing Authority Board or Mental Health?
They also talked about the Sharp copier contract, Megan spoke of that yesterday as well.
It's on this too.
Yep, and that's on there.
Who would have sent that?
The, which one are you talking about?
The copier, would you assume that and take on that responsibility?
I, I don't know why we would need it, because we have our own copier. So as far as HHS, is that like the county's responsibility to provide that for them?
So is, so is this currently, that contract being paid for by Mitchell County?
I haven't had time to look that up to see like who's that guy.
That was, that was my question when, when I saw that, was.
Because we would not need it, we have our own copier.
We said, "No, if you, if you kept it separate from, and went into those offices, would you want a copy?"
Because the copier's not in that office, it's like in a different, it's in a hallway closet.
Okay, that's right, it's not in our office, I remember that.
Do you favor their phones?
It comes out, I believe that comes out of Department 55.
Okay.
So that's another thing, I know that's an item on there about.
Yeah.
Doing some of those department stuff. Dave used to order stuff for them, and then they recently kind of started taking that over. Like last week, he had ordered like twelve papers. So I think that's, I spoke with Dave before coming here, I think he's willing to do some of those custodial supplies still. And some of those other departments, I mean, Dave and I already do a lot for the Department 55. I don't know.
That's helpful.
But as far as those two offices, just an idea, could you use one as like a locked room where you have all the files in there, then one that's kind of cleaned out so someone can use it for phone calls or meetings or whatever?
Well, there is a small conference room there, that has a little, like a small conference table and a phone.
That works. Megan put on here, laptops are not available, there may be some extra monitors that are available. However, Mitchell County would need to be on a CSS wishlist for this, as there are other counties that are interested as well.
So the thought is to maintain a, you know, a computer in that office where they could.
If we chose to be in, be in that office.
So would.
Otherwise, we, we already have computers.
Right.
I mean, you're already. To have two different spots for it, I would prefer just to be in ours, instead of going back and forth.
Right.
Would Laura have to take on Department 61, 53, and 55?
Well, I would say, just off the top of my head, 55, Dave and I probably do.
Can you guys clarify what budget goes on?
And then 61 is juveniles, so, I mean, I think a lot of that's just the billing stuff. It could be incorrect. And 53, I don't remember what it does.
53 is substance abuse.
Is that kind of the same thing as 61 as far as just paying the bills when they come in?
I'm not sure who.
I, I haven't ran the stuff on that yet for the, what that looks like.
Well, that's the, yeah, Mitchell County Substance Abuse Coalition.
No, that's, it's something different. It's the Substance Abuse Budget, not the Substance Abuse Coalition. That's something completely separate, yeah.
So is it 61, is that to do with North Iowa Juvenile and Central Iowa Juvenile?
Detention, yes.
And so like.
That's where yours rolls up.
We pay those claims already, so like we keep, you guys don't ever see those claims when they come down, we have like a HIPAA audit that all those go into. If, depending on what that is, I mean, that's something that we could do in our office. I'm gonna verify what that all entails, I guess.
So it's a budget at 32. It's a budget at 32.5, which suits quite a bit for just those two juvenile detention services. So I don't know if there's more that comes out of it, rather than them, or.
And those can, I think, I was looking back at one of them, it can add up kind of fast if someone's in there.
Yeah.
So I think that it was lower for a couple of years, and it got higher. And I think that's why the budget is where it's at, but.
Yeah, she came here to our meeting, and there was an individual that got sent there, and it was a long stay.
Right, I know, the North Iowa Juvenile.
And I think she was getting down to where her budget was very low.
So it's high for a reason.
Right, because it's, it's an absorbent amount per day down there.
So that's, correct me if I'm wrong, is that just submitting the bills for those two and managing the budget?
The 61 and 53, that's what I think it is, but I could be incorrect.
And then 55 is, that is social services billing? And so Dave used to order the supplies?
Yep.
And then.
I would think that'd be something he and him could kind of.
Yeah, I mean, we already kind of do the budget, sometimes we get, as far as like office supplies, Ashley will tell us what to order, but I don't know if there's really much to it. much to it.
And then the number 12, or the 12 is the general assistance?
I think it's, yeah, general services is what it's labeled.
Yeah, right.
And as far as establishing a community health assessment chair for mental health, that's actually our public health community health assessment, she's just a chair on one of the committees, so that's not a big deal, that's something public health can appoint another chair.
What about the Housing Authority?
Yeah, that's our, yeah, the Housing Authority also. That, I don't know anything about the North Iowa Regional Housing Authority Board, is that something like a Board of Supervisor, like, are you guys already on it?
Something that they point, and they, you know, the, the water tower that's in the southwest part of Osage, they have those rental houses that...
The like the low income, brick duplex.
Yeah, so that, that is, I believe, managed by North Iowa Regional Housing, I believe that is them.
And one of them was just on the board, you're saying?
Yeah, and so, you know, they, they meet and they probably talk about improvements, and I don't know a lot about it.
I think at one time here, while, like, three, four, or five years ago, Tracy from Economic Development was on that, and then she resigned and took another job, and then we didn't have a assistant director for a while, so I think, I think they said they would take over that board spot.
So it could go back to Economic Development?
Maybe go back, we could maybe check with them and ask.
Ask.
Right, right.
Could ask them.
So this is Megan and Ashley, and we're on this call, so I guess I feel a little offended that you're not asking us, we provide these services and manage these budgets and have for many years. So if you have questions about the budgets and how, how that works, you can certainly reach out and have a conversation with us about that. When it comes to these, the substance abuse budget, the juvenile budget, it's not just getting a bill and paying the bill. We, you have to determine if an individual is a Mitchell County resident, if they have insurance, that other insurance would pay for it. So it's a weeding out, it's a, it's a fiscally responsible, financially responsible position that we make sure that there are all other funding sources are utilized before Mitchell County local taxpayer dollars pay these bills. So it's not just getting a bill and paying it, it's a, there's a process to it to determine if Mitchell County Substance Abuse Budget needs to pay.
Can I ask, Megan, so is that review somewhat similar to your initial review for general assistance, because you were really good about stating, you know, that we have to step through certain things to assure that, that they qualify, and that perhaps they, we can't use some other program to assist them first? Is it, is it similar to that, like general assistance, where you're checking those?
No, it's just different than general assistance, yep. So again, this list that we sent was to the Board of Supervisors for them to consider. I guess I'm a little confused about why we're discussing the list, this meeting about general assistance. This is different than that.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's all the other...
Well, I guess on here is where to store Mitchell County general assistance and, and covering their files, so that might have been our, our reason for looping in, those were just additional things that, that we were doing.
And the question, Paul was the first question about general assistance, just so we have direction about who is going to be managing this in the future, so we can start transitioning this program to that entity, and also for us to be communicating to all of the individuals that we work with of where to go in the future. As soon as that's determined, we'll start that process. Thank you.
Thank you, Megan.
Thank you.
So the bottom line is, we just need to decide on general assistance, and Laura has offered to do that and refer people to the other process at the state to assist, and also we also discussed the fact that we could revisit this if there's a greater need in our county, is that right?
You can always ask. And I think you're, they're gonna be, this is gonna be a crisis.
But I think we should not focus on the immediate need, and that's general assistance.
Do you have a quorum?
We don't.
You do?
You can't vote for that. There's four of us here, four hours, seven, so...
Well, we...
Can I, can I just say one more thing? I just want to let you know that I, I was not requesting this, seeking this, I gave this information that other counties, that's the route they're going, if you guys choose to hire somebody, that is, I'm just telling you, I'm willing to do it, to absorb it, doesn't mean it needs to happen.
Thank you for that.
Yes, I'm certainly appreciative.
And I reiterate that Laura didn't seek me, I was asking for information, and, and I, I also asked Megan and Ashley for information as well, so, as I did ask our auditor as well, and other auditors, and public health people, and county social services people.
Isn't, is this up to you to decide?
No, if you're gonna take, you're gonna take the role of general assistance, then you need, it needs to start with you, you need, your board needs to say, yeah, we're willing to let her do this.
So that's interesting.
If that's going to happen. You guys are just okay?
Ball rolling.
That, yes, we will allow it, if you, if that's the route you want to go, right?
Yeah.
So then the next step, from what I understand from these other counties, and maybe you have gotten other information, is that then the Board of Supervisors would, through resolution, appoint Laura as the Director of General Assistance, and, and that would, that resolution with the job description and, so if Laura gets from that, but that would be a Board of Supervisors.
I think we would, does it make the Board of Health to be taking care of it? The Board of Health decides who they want to do within their, within themselves, and she's volunteer, but that's between you guys.
Right.
So, just a question, if Laura takes it on or another employee, are they going to get paid an additional wage for those hours?
I'm not supportive of that.
I don't, I'm just asking.
She said she would absorb it.
But that's Laura, that's not another employee or hourly, or Jessa, that's Laura, and I'm just curious, will that be?
And again, that was not the plan, that was not the plan.
At this time, going back, the wages that were being paid were not coming from the county supervisors?
No.
Correct.
But we can't tell them how to spend their money?
No.
Just give them a bag and they do what they want with it.
I am just asking.
So that's not our decision.
I know, wasn't saying that, I was just asking a question.
So, so we do need to, to know who we would, because it is the responsibility of the Board of Supervisors to appoint the General Assistance Director. That is not the job of the Board of Health, that is the job of the Board of Supervisors, per Chapter 252. That is the role of the Board of Supervisors. So, and I did ask those several other counties exactly, how did you go about this? One of them, the Board of Health, just voted that it was okay at their meeting, and then the supervisors appointed the, the Public Health Director to be the General Assistance Director at the supervisor meeting, but they, one did a resolution, one didn't do a resolution. It's, it's kind of like every county program, everybody's a little different, so.
I would just like to bring a point of order, or point of contention, or whatever point I'd like to make, is the fact that if she's agreeing and you're taking that on, I would like it to be a general understanding that we will do an assessment within a couple of months of this position and how it's going, considering some of the things we pointed out as concerns, and then if we need to come back to that in a reevaluation of a creation of a position, or going to another department or whatnot, I, I think that would be a, a good avenue to be looking down for the future.
I could just answer personally, for me, I, I think that's a, a good route to take in keeping an open mind, because in fact, we don't know what these next few months will look like, and, and we do want to make sure that we're serving the people in, in the county, and so, you know, the other couple of counties that had already started, they said, you know, so far, you know, it's hard for us to tell, we're waiting until three or four months after July 1st.
So how are they dealing with it in other counties? That general assistance person may get that individual who needs to go to the navigator, is that correct? Is that what they're saying?
So, so right now, they're using, from what I understand, somewhat the same process that county social services, their people are, you know, kind of still, either still there, or actually, I don't know, in the one county, they aren't still there. So they are using, you know, these kinds of resources and saying, here's some, here's some people that we can, you, put you in touch with, or, you know, she said, we, we use that, that book extensively, you know, as far as that's concerned, to help put them in touch with the housing people they need to be in touch with, or the workforce people they need to be in touch with, or the 43 North Iowa people, or Families First, or whoever, or, you know, a juvenile assistant.
The general assistance, general services is, is a different aspect.
The social services aspect, nope, you're exactly right.
Help somebody, point them in a direction to the navigator, for instance. General assistance is, I don't have enough money to bury my dad, I don't have enough food on the table, I don't, I need rent assistance, it's a different, different thing.
Funny, you had last resort.
Yes.
Yeah, and, and I understand that, but I have a feeling that the general public need assistance, that was my question, are these other counties finding that those people are coming not just for the general assistance, but they need assistance with the other things?
Don't know.
Yeah.
Don't know.
And that, that's one of the things we will need to be open to and reevaluating, because that will be a different time constraint. That was my...
Yep, yep, no, and that's, you know, I, like I said, I asked that same question, you know, because I would imagine they would be getting people from outside of general assistance as well, and that's, her response is, so far, that's, that's what we're doing. Now, keep in mind, the one county is only into it 30 days, so it's kind of a short timeframe to know. And I, I think that's, I think that's a, a good idea, I mean, we don't know what we don't know right now.
I guess I look at every, you guys, what you're talking about, I understand, but my point of view from the whole time is, Terry, you mentioned about wasting time, a few of us board members had been working on trying to keep...
I didn't say anything about wasting time.
Keeping, no, about, we need to do something, while we've been trying for about five weeks how we could fund this, how we could keep these people, make, make sure our services are moving forward, and then, when we have these professionals that have been doing it, if we go look six months down the road, if it's not working, or if it is working, we haven't lost our, our professional help, but now we're looking at, we've lost them, and now we're already, like last week, Pam came right out and said, but we may have to hire a part-time, I didn't like to hear that, because we've already have people in places, let's see what the legislature's gonna do, let's give it a chance, and we don't have to, we're gonna have a crisis, big time. Now, I don't believe we would have had much of a crisis if we would, could have contained the, or kept these two and see what happens in six months, once we get into the new year and the, and the laws and whatever they're gonna do. I was just out of being last night, ECI, they're fully funding it, three and a half weeks ago, they told us, say, we're not gonna fund it. So I just, I don't like this, the way we're approaching this, I wanted to keep moving forward, see what happens in six months. So, you know, you want to reevaluate this in two months, I don't think we would have had to reevaluate in two months, I think we could have waited six months to a year, but it's kind of confusing how we're doing this, to me.
So let me see if I can clarify for you, that what we were presented with is two separate positions, we can't automatically from these chairs award a job to a person, we had to create a job with a valid job description and open it up to the public, because there are other people within the public and other surrounding counties that may be as qualified or more qualified. So we have to be very cautious of how we state what we were proposed, and I understood it was two positions, jobs.
And, and our meetings with those, those girls totally understood that, that we would have...
I think we need to be real cautious about how we state things here, is, is my point of view, we need to legally be very cautious, just from that standpoint.
Anything else on general assistance?
Yes.
You guys, you need to do anything? You'll, you can have your own board meeting again and discuss and do more if you would like.
I think at this point, we will take it to our, our board individually and discuss it and go forward, with the understanding that if it is not staying with general assistance with the concerns that have been proposed, that we look at it differently, and I understand where you're coming from, Todd, but we don't know, there are too many unknowns.
Well, and that doesn't have, that's not our...
Right, that's not ours, that's not ours, but, but we need to reevaluate.
Yes.
We need to be open to reevaluate and say whether it's working or not.
Right, so, so, you know, I guess my only concern is that we are getting down to the crunch time, and, and Chapter 232 states that, that a person may make application for assistance to a board member of, a member of the Board of Supervisors or the General Assistance Director. So after June 30th, if we don't have a General Assistance Director, then...
We have our own board meeting, I mean, on June, June 6th. So we have our own board meeting.
So we have our meeting, so...
I'd like to know your direction before we assign somebody a job.
Well, and we'd have to...
And I want, I mean, I don't, whatever route is taken, if it does come our way, I would, I want to make sure there's proper training and the resources are given, and I want there to be enough time, so, we can...
We can...
And they were both very willing to, you know, to assist in training and, you know, their, their goal is to make sure that people are served.
All right, anything else on general assistance?
So, if I understand this correctly, we've agreed to discuss it and take it on through the Board of Health, through our Public Health, Home Health Services, with the understanding that it does not stay with...
They just have not put a motion on that.
Right, but, but what I'm stating is that we could revisit this, if this is not working.
They can always come to the board.
Come, come back to you.
You're gonna always come, we have the board to discuss things.
Yeah.
They're not giving us no guarantees.
You can always come to talk with us.
Yep, thank you. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you for all your time today and consideration.
We're gonna adjourn the meeting at 2:11.
Thank you for being here.
Yes, thank you.